All right, the time being 7:00 PM. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. I'll let everybody know who's here this evening. Several of the hearings have been continued to our next meeting, including Agenda Item E, which is 913 East Street, Agenda Item F, which is 1438 Main Street, Agenda Items G and H, which are the 21600 Shoshine Street hearings, Agenda Item I, which is 1879 Main Street, and Agenda Item J, which is 735, I'm sorry, which is 1166, 1177, 1187 Main Street. So if you're here for any of those, you do not need to stick around because nothing will be done with any of those this evening. They'll be pushed to our next meeting on December 18th. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item A, which is approval minutes for October 16th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
All right. Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Agenda Item B1, which is committee reports, any committee reports, any of the members wish to make at this time?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item B2, which is town planners' report. Mr. Louder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keep it brief this evening. On the horizon for the December 18th meeting, our next meeting, we have five new filings. 11 Sunset Circle, a family suite special permit, 770 Main Street, a site plan review, land disturbance resubmission for the proposed daycare with a modified proposal, 345 Main Street for special permits for a retail sale of alcoholic beverages, as well as a wall-mounted sign, 1625 Andover Street, site plan review and land disturbance for a proposed retail marijuana facility, as we mentioned at our last meeting, and 686 Clark Road, a special permit for cultivation and manufacturing of marijuana. And the only other item of note is just another reminder that this Friday evening, December 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on the Town Common, will be the town's annual tree lighting, if it doesn't get washed out. Anybody looking for updates on details for that event should keep an eye on the town website. Thank you.
Now, I sent Ms. Louder a message earlier that I had something that came up at work, so I will not be here on the 18th for the December meeting. All right. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, which is 30 Mac Drive subdivision modification request. Do we have anybody here for 30 Mac Drive? Once you're settled, if you give your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name's Matt Fenella. This is my wife, Brianna. We recently finished our, building our home on Mac Drive, and there's a concrete garage on the property that the inspector wanted taken down before we got our occupancy because there was an old print that said "to be removed from 2002." We're asking to be able to keep the garage because it meets all of the setbacks, being 40 feet from the property line, and it's under 20 feet tall. And from my understanding, the removal was something that the old owner put on there on their own, not something the town asked for. We have painted it, gave it a facelift, and have also taken down the Conex box that was attached to it that the town required. We're open to any questions.
All right. Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was by the property today. The, were you calling it a garage or are you calling it a shed now?
I was using it as a shed. It's big enough to park a car.
Okay. Because you have a garage at the front of the house, correct?
Attached.
Attached to the house, right?
Yeah.
So I'm figuring that you're making it a shed, using it for storage, lawnmower, tractor, all that stuff. That's what I was figuring you were going to do, but I figured I'd ask you for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Lawnmower, motorcycle, tools, stuff like that.
Okay. You'd get the motorcycle in there for sure.
Yeah.
So let me ask you, does the driveway go right to the shed?
Yes.
So that makes it good. I mean, you can take your stuff right in there and get in and out, get in and out easily. So, I mean, change, plans change, and I'm aware of that, so I'd hate to see you have to tear it down. But I know it's pretty oversized for a quote "shed," and did he mention anything about the size of it, as the wire has to come down, or anything like that?
He only mentioned because the 2002 plan said "to be removed" when the builder was doing the two other houses on the road. There was a question about the size, if it was over 20 feet, and it's not, 17 and a half.
So we're 17 and a half by?
It's 17 and a half tall and then 25 by 40.
That's a pretty good sized shed.
Yeah.
I can see why it would be a garage almost too as well, but so was it used a garage before?
I'm not sure what the previous owner used it for.
Okay.
I think a lot of storage.
Yeah. I have no problem with the idea of keeping it as a shed, and as a shed only rather than double garages. So, I mean, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any objection to this, seems reasonable. That's all my comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of my only thoughts, not even a concern, is why, again, going back to the original plan, why they were going to take it down. The only thing I would want to be certain of is that this shed is still structurally sound and, you know, is not some sort of a safety hazard or anything like that. I'm sure from your perspective, you wouldn't go in there if it didn't appear to be, but, you know, my concern would be what if back in 2002, they thought that it was structurally failing somehow, and that eventually they were going to take it down before it fell down?
From talking to the previous owner, he said he always wanted to keep it. It is a concrete structure, block, concrete block, so it's very sturdy.
Has, I don't know if inspectional services or the building department has weighed in on whether or not there's any reason they would object to the shed, other than the semantics of the plan?
Sure. So because this plan was originally approved by the planning board, we don't have any administrative authority to deviate from that plan. So the intent was that the original plan said for both the barn and the garage to be removed, again, as the applicant noted, or the homeowner noted, that it wasn't anything the town specifically asked for, something that was offered up as a part of the plan. The only concerns that the building inspector and I had were if it met setbacks, because while the planning board does have the authority to say, yes, the structure can stay, they don't have the authority as a board to waive any dimensional requirements. So that's why I had asked for the plot plan to show that it meets all the setbacks, and that it is in fact not too tall for an accessory structure, otherwise it would have to go to the ZBA. And as far as why it was previously to be removed, I also thought about that fact. From a building code perspective, once it's been there for more than 10 years, it's not subject to any building inspections, because it kind of is understood to have passed the test of time. As far as its removal, accessory structures can't exist on a lot without a principal structure, and at the time, there was no home, there was just a garage. So I expect that that could have been why, and that's, you know, purely my speculation as to why it may have been labeled for removal. But all in all, we don't, we being myself and the building inspector, didn't see any problem with it staying there, just procedurally, we didn't have the authority to allow them to keep it. So that's why I advised them to come back to the board to ask for that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Louder. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just as an up, you know, as an update to this, to the site, I was by the site today. Garage looked in great condition, nothing, no safety hazards, from what I could see on the outside, as far as being structurally sound, so, just FYI.
Thank you. I visited the site. If you would trust it with that E Mustang in there, then I'm sure it's fine.
To work hard.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, I mean, it hasn't been a problem for 21 years since the approval, you know, meets the setbacks, as Ms. Louder alluded to, and it probably just as easily could have said existing to remain on that plan, and still would have been approved back in 2002. So I am going to be okay with the administrative change, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The chair is all set as well. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, is it a public hearing? It is, right?
Nope.
No? Okay, just a modification request? So we approve the modification request at 30 Mac Drive?
All right, so we have a motion made, we have a second. Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item C, 50 Vale Street, family suite special permit. Have a motion to waive the public reading?
Don't move.
A motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once you're settled, floor is yours. Give your names for the record, please.
Names for the record?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Kathleen Mortimer.
Danielle Mortimer. My son.
Floor is yours.
Applying for the family suite permit, so.
Okay. All right, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
So I did take a ride by there today, and I see that you've already made some remedial, you know, the existing cap out there that was built, a permit or something, so a number of years ago. So that's good that you took care of that. So I guess what I'm looking at is, so basically, I'm seeing a two-story house at the end of the day, and it looks to me, and which floor is going to be the accessory dwelling unit?
Second.
Second floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
There'll be a second-floor bedroom, and then in-law suite will be up there, too.
Okay. So basically, it looks like that the entry on the second floor will be deducted from the square footage. Is that how you arrive at the 2,000, I mean, at the 1,000 square feet? Because right now, it looks like it's about 1,200 square feet.
Oh, yeah, so the left side there is not any part of the apartment. That's about 200 square feet roughly, where my sister will be. That'll be partly at the house, and will be on the other side of it.
So there's a, there's a back, we're putting on, we wanted to put on a back room to the back of the house, where the staircase would be upstairs. It's, it's still inside the room. We wanted to go in and up to the second-floor bedroom, and in and up to the in-law apartment as well.
So it's about?
So it is over, it's 820 square feet, so it's over the 800, too.
So which space now, I'm looking, I'm looking at the second-floor plan, which space would not be included in the 80? Are you?
On the left-hand side, there's a bedroom, a bathroom, and a walk-in closet, and you see the entry is up on the right.
Yeah.
And the dark lines are where the in-law.
Okay, so that entry is actually going to be, give the first, the first floor basically access to another bedroom, bathroom, walk-in closet.
Yeah.
I see, okay. Okay. That makes sense now. Okay, other than that, I have no problems here, connected to sewer there.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Lozardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the entire second story is new, and it's some addition for the house, and kind of looks like this kind of dark gray dotted line is denoting the in-law suite there.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, and it's over the 800, so we'd have to go 820.
All right, yeah, I have no, no further questions.
Mr. Chip?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just because you've mentioned the 820 twice, our provision, isn't there a provision you can go up to 1,000?
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
So it's not like you're asking to go over, you know, our maximum. We have the ability to.
Okay.
To approve between 800 and 1,000, so.
Okay.
I studied the plan at length. Thanks to Google Streets, I was able to just browse by the site and see the layout of the front and all that. Are you doing any landscaping or any other changes? One of the things we just have a concern with is people putting in underground utilities or overhead utilities, and then they've come back and said, we can't do the landscaping we promised, because it would interfere with the utilities. Are all the utilities either, I doubt they're the same, because you're probably upgrading your service if you don't already have a 200 amp service, but is it going in and through, they're just replacing an existing line?
Yeah, what I'm hoping we can do is actually just trench from the power pole to the house and have it be underground, the upgrade.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess what I would ask is, if you're doing that, if you do a landscaping plan, just make sure that it's taken into account that you've given sufficient clearance, that you're not planting anything that's going to interfere with that electrical.
Yeah.
So other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all in favor of family suites. I like the idea of keeping the family together and helping whenever you can, you know, and I'm glad you're doing that. So the plans will be approved here, you know, but when the building inspector gets to the site, he will oversee everything, and it's his final say as far as, you know, the dimensions and size and all that common space and all that stuff. But there's never usually a problem, you can always work with him and get it done correctly and done properly, and I wish you good luck. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Chair is all set as well. Open up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and we close the public hearing.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries, ask for the family suite special permit.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we approve the family suite at 50 Vale Street as proposed.
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
That wasn't so bad, I was scared I have to die.
Not to worry.
Don't tell anyone.
We don't mind.
The scary of all the board.
I was shaking in my boots.
Yes, yes, I am. I remember the name. Yeah, yeah. Small world. Take care.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, which is 402 Main Street, for a site plan review, special permit, land disturbance permit. Do we have a motion to waive the public reading?
Don't move.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Once everyone gets settled, if you give your names for the record, floor will be yours. Will these go on by themselves? There we go.
No. Maybe. I don't know. Fuck it.
You good?
Yep.
All right. I'm Jim Waterman, Executive Vice President for Washville Car Wash, things around Massachusetts.
Hi, I'm Attorney Pete Nicosia on behalf of the applicant.
Hi, I'm Garrett Picarello, Civil Engineer with GPI on behalf of the applicant.
Floor is yours, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to kind of open up this by showing kind of the vicinity of the site, where the project area is. I accidentally may have just lost my connection. It gets finicky.
Yeah, okay. Try not to touch it.
You're a software engineer on that?
I don't know.
He's off duty. I can't even get ice cream in the water.
I'll try not to shake the table too much. So just to give everyone an idea of where the site is located, it's at 402 Main Street, and I'm just looking at your GIS here. This parcel highlighted here, it's located just east of 495 here on State Route 38 or Main Street, just to kind of zoom in. It's, so the subject parcel is right here, it's the screen outline. It's located right next to the Wamisett Lanes, which is this parcel just to the east of it, abutting the property here. The site's bound by Main Street along the frontage, as well as Collab Road along the westerly edge of the parcel. Collab Road is actually a private road, it's essentially a private driveway that provides access to the parcel in the rear here. I'll just kind of go in a street view real quick to just give you a better idea of the site. So we're, oh, so you could actually see the Wamisett Lanes, and in the distance here, we are directly abutting that property. The site is currently this florist and greenery garden center here. Then we are proposing to redevelop this site into a car wash, as I will show you as I kind of jump into the plans here. Just wanted to kind of give you at least an idea of the frontage of the site.
Why don't you pull that cord up on top maybe one or other?
Yeah, I might know.
There's a switch on the back, please.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to kind of give a brief overview of the site plan set that we submitted with our application here. So starting with this existing conditions plan, just kind of showing you what I just showed you in an actual aerial image here, our property is here, existing garden center, frontage on Main Street, and then also abutting a private access here, identified as Collab Road to the west. I'm going to jump into the site plan, and I'll hop over to this kind of prettier picture here, to just give an idea of what we are proposing and kind of how this looks all laid out on the site. So essentially, we're looking at complete demolition of the existing site, kind of wiping it clean and starting fresh, and we are proposing to add this single tunnel car wash building here. So it's a 47, 65 square foot tunnel, it's a single tunnel, car wash is 135 feet long. So vehicles will enter the site from Main Street, so we're proposing a single curb cut on Main Street. If I just flip back quickly to the existing condition, you'll notice. So you'll notice that there's two curb cuts currently on the site to the existing garden center.
You got to look quick.
Yeah, you got to look quick. We are proposing to consolidate these two curb cuts into one, so that was one thing I wanted to know on the site plan, and you can see it here. So we're kind of centralizing the curb cut as best we can to work with, you know, general circulation layout of the site, and we're looking to really improve safety overall for the site, as well as just cars entering and exiting Main Street. So just general kind of circulation of the site, vehicles will enter Main Street here, and they can either, they can continue straight into this kind of vacuum park area, so it's a paved area with 15 vacuum parking stalls, so it's got the overhead booms with the vacuum stations you've probably seen at a car wash. And if cars are entering the site and going immediately to the car wash tunnel, they'll kind of take it right into here as they enter, and we have significant queuing, as you can see in here, in this area here, for cars kind of backing up if needed, trying to keep things away from the street, and we're not really going to be anywhere close to that in terms of onsite queuing. So cars will enter, there's three pay stations here that they'll stop at and pay, so they can pull into any of these three spaces, and then we also have a separate bypass lane that's just going to be open along the right side. The vehicles, you know, need to decide they need to bypass the pay stations, as well as, you know, different things, fire access, as well as access for trash truck to get to this dumpster enclosure showing here in the rear of the site. So the car wash entrance to the tunnel is on this side, the northerly side, and vehicles will travel through, exit here, and then they can just turn back out onto Main Street So I will hop back into the plans real quick. I'm going to bypass the site plan, and I'm going to go over grading and drainage, kind of on a high level. As you can see, we provided this grading and drainage plan with our submission. We, one thing I want to know first is we are actually decreasing impervious area for the site slightly. There's a lot of greenhouses onsite, a lot of roofs throughout the site that we're removing, so we actually ended up with a decrease. However, we are still providing onsite stormwater management, we're collecting all stormwater via either roof drain leaders or onsite catch basins, and we're routing all stormwater runoff to one of two places, either an underground infiltration system, which is this dashed line showing here underneath the pavement, or an above-ground infiltration basin in the rear of the site. So infiltration meaning providing stormwater treatment, as well as providing groundwater recharge, you know, back to the groundwater, resupplying the groundwater. So those are, that's generally what we're proposing for drainage on the site. We're meeting all Mass DEP, as well as town drainage requirements, and I know that's been reviewed, and we already received comments that were, in my opinion, not very substantial. So I'll actually back up for a second, just to quickly go over the existing stormwater. It's a little unorthodox in that this, pretty much this entire Collab Road here, as well as everything on the current garden center site, drains to a low point located right here along the eastern, easterly property line, and there's actually a drainage, concrete drainage structure, an engineered drainage structure that exists right here. All the stormwater sheet flows overland into that, where there's an opening enters the structure, where it's essentially an oil-water separator that also provides some detention, and the stormwater actually discharges out into this Wamisett property, but there's a drainage easement in place for that. So this was, this was installed at the same time, actually in conjunction with the Wamisett project, so the whole thing kind of tied together. So we are proposing to continue to send stormwater where it's going today, being this discharge point here, but the difference is we're providing substantial treatment, storage, detention, all of that, so it's going to be a much better situation drainage-wise. Yeah, I'll hop over to the utility plan briefly. All public utilities are available to the site. As you can see, we're showing water and gas connections to the mains in Main Street, as well as, we're actually pulling electric off a pole in the back, popping a new pole and going underground to our building. And sewer, we have sewer that comes from Main Street and actually travels down Collab Road, so we're proposing to connect into that. And all these tanks that you see here, those are sewer-related, they're reclaimed tanks for the car wash, so they reclaim a certain percentage of water from the tunnel itself, goes through these tanks, and goes back in. A couple of the other tanks are essentially oil-water separators, but all discharge is from the tunnel itself, goes to the sewer system. Briefly, we submitted an erosion control plan, showing, you know, all the erosion control measures needed, they're in construction, and we'll get into that too much. Finally, we provided a landscape plan here, which I'll pop back over to the render, which you can see a little bit better, but we are proposing landscaping throughout the site. And I'll skip really quickly over details. I'll just show, we did, we did provide a lighting plan, showing all photo metrics for the site, and, and we provided sign and graphics plans, which I know we got some comments on to kind of add to these a little bit, but just want to make everyone aware of that. And finally, just some building elevation, showing generally what the building will look like. One thing I didn't note is that we will need conservation approval, Conservation Commission approval for this project. There is a wetland located, not on the best plan for this, there's a wetland located in the rear of the site, it's actually back here, just on the other side of Collab Road, it really drops down to a wetland here. So we're showing the associated setbacks, there's, you know, state of mass, their mass DEP requires 100-foot bordering vegetated wetland buffer, so we are proposing some disturbance in there, not much, it's really only for demolition activities, we need to remove this greenhouse building and kind of dress out the area while it's heated. But we have spoken with the conservation agent a bit, and we are going to submit an NOI for this. That is the plan. And finally, this, Route 38 is under the jurisdiction of Massot, so we will, we are required to have Massot access permit for the new driveway, kind of the consolidation into the single driveway, and we will be redoing the sidewalk, or actually adding, continuing the sidewalk from Wamisett and redesigning all the curb ramps per Massot requirements, and that process is currently underway. We've submitted, I believe we got 25% design review comments, so that's where we are with Massot. And I know, I noted a couple times, but we have received comments from the town, both from the peer-reviewed consultant, as well as the community development comments, and I've reviewed those, I don't, again, I don't see anything really overly concerning from our perspective, but we just got them pretty recently, so I'll go through them, revise accordingly, and send a comment response letter back to the town addressing them. So with that, I will open it up. Two questions.
It's my job.
Okay, yeah, you're right. I will allow you to move it.
We'll start with Mr. Chip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, it's an excellent package, a lot of detail. Obviously, you know, we rely very heavily on our town engineering department to review all of the stormwater and those utilities and whatnot, so, you know, once we have those comments, we can dig into all of that, but I like that you're reducing the impervious area, I like that you're adding the groundwater recharge, et cetera, new electrical, which doesn't look like it's going to interfere. New electrical, which doesn't look like it's going to interfere with any of the landscaping or anything like that. I guess the only thing, and I don't even know if it's really an issue because the scale of the entry is hard to, hard to understand because the length of the site makes everything look really narrow. But at the one where all four pieces meet, you've got two ways coming in and out from thirty-eight, two ways going in and out from the garage area, then sort of a one-way loop that's one lane coming out of the tunnel. But then two lanes that turns into four lanes going up on the right side. So, you know, my only concern there would be that that feels like that could be a lot of cross-traffic. I know if the other garages in town that I've seen, you know, after we've had a bad storm and there's all the snow and salt, you know, the first decent day you have, there's, you know, hundreds of cars out there lined up at the car wash. And I could just see a lot of traffic going in and out and around. So, you know, so I guess all I would say is I'd like to see all of that clearly marked as far as, you know, right now, there's no, I don't know if these are the lane markings or if these are just informational graphics for us to understand the flow of the site. But just want to make sure that, you know, the people coming out of the tunnel don't think that they have free rein to just hang a right without any concern of what's on the left. So maybe some signage to that degree. And then obviously, people coming in and out of the vacuum area, those lanes, just, you know, beware of traffic from the right. You know, I don't know exactly what it would be. It's not really, you know, site traffic and whatnot is not really my specialty. But I imagine I've seen, well, intersections with stop signs that look like they'd be four-way stops, but it'll say like caution, traffic from the right does not stop or something like that. So, so really, the traffic in the, in that main area where all of those lanes are basically intersecting, that's really the only thing that is a concern, but nothing that, you know, presents a problem for me with the overall project.
Okay.
Just something that I think on those really busy days, you know, I could see a lot of people, you know, especially if people are backed up because you've got one lane exiting. If you want to go left on thirty-eight and it's busy, sometimes it's a little bit of a wait. So that could back up into those other egressing areas. And next thing you know, nobody knows who's on first and could cause a little anxiety for the drivers. But other than that, it's a really nice proposal. You know, as we get further along, I'm sure we'll talk about signage and all of that good stuff. But it looks like a fantastic project and hopefully we can, you know, we'll see this come forward.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fratella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions for you. Are you aware of this car wash across the street?
Yes.
So why another one?
I don't believe that one is currently operating as far as I know. Is this the one at the gas station?
Yes.
That you're referencing? I haven't seen it operate in probably six to eight months at a minimum.
Yeah, I know there's one there, but they could open it tomorrow too as well. I'm not sure what, what held it up.
It is a different service than what we, what we are proposing. We're proposing what we call an express model. We currently operate in Tingsborough, we just opened up, been there about three months. We operate fifteen of these in New England and they're meant to create a really fast and convenient service for customers to get you on and off the property quickly. And the only thing that we do on the property would be washing cars. Where you're speaking of, they also have gas and convenience store, et cetera. And I don't know if that tunnel's attended by a human being, but we have several attendants that are there to help our customers through the process.
Okay. Couple of other ones in town you're aware of, correct? Couple, two or three other ones that are in town?
Correct, I believe those are self-serve style.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I haven't seen any, I know, was there a traffic study done on this side?
They submitted a trip generation and site access study, yes. And that was given a preliminary review by the peer consultant. Their primary focus was the stormwater. And I noted in my memorandum that if you folks wanted to scope a specific review or request additional traffic data, that, you know, that's something you can do.
Yeah, it just seems like that area right now is very, very busy as far as traffic goes. And to make sure we're all on board as far as it not causing more problems than we need in town, that I'd like to see a traffic, I don't have, we haven't had it in our package, right? No?
No, so that was just raw data of trip generation and site access. If there's some more specific data, then we can certainly ask the applicants here for that.
So how many trips do you believe a day going in and out?
I actually do not have that report in front of me. Our traffic engineer did not join us tonight.
Okay. That's, that'd be one of my biggest questions is how many people are you expecting to go in and go out?
Right, and that wasn't allowed, I apologize, I don't have it open right now.
No problem.
But the plan was I wanted to kind of get some preliminary feedback. I know traffic is always of concern.
Yeah.
And then once we have some more requirements from you, I'll probably bring the traffic engineer with me.
Great, all right. So another question I have is regarding the stormwater. It seems to me that if you're opening up a new business there, that all the stormwater that's there should be maintained by you guys and not having to go next door to the Wamisette Lanes facility. Is that part of your plan or?
We are managing all of the stormwater onsite. Just the ultimate overflow or discharge point is, is in that, where it is today. That goes on to the Wamisette site. It's really the only location we have to send drainage, given the grades. I also know Mass DEP has made some comments in the past about not wanting any stormwater sent to the rear wetland. And we're going to be going through that NOI process with them. So it's really, to be honest, it's our only option. We are substantially filling the site. It's going to be a large cost to do so. We're going to be hauling in a lot of fill and that's really to get all that stormwater to infiltrate into the ground. And then anything that's just a storm event's overflow. So it's going to be less, it's less runoff as well as stormwater volume going to that discharge point than there is today and it's substantial.
Being on the board, when the Wamisette Lanes facility was being permitted, they invested a lot of money to get that stormwater that was all coming off of Tucksbury Greenery. You know, at one point, and you know, it was a big issue about why is it coming off of Tucksbury Greenery going into, you know, that, the old hotel that was there, motel that was there, you know? And so I just think that if you guys are going to come in and put a new facility in there, that you should be responsible for your own stormwater and maintain your own facilities and so forth and so on, so.
Correct, and we are. All of the onsite stormwater would be maintained by the owner. We submitted an operations and maintenance plan for the, for the stormwater. You're talking, it's just the discharge point, but there's legal rights to do so and there's an easement in place.
Okay. All right, so my other question I had is on the entrance to this parking, to the car wash, if somebody wants to get out at some point, can they get out? Once they get past a certain spot?
Yes, so they can, they can get out up until this point right here. Once they pass this curb line and get into here.
Point of no return, I guess, right? From there?
I'm sorry.
Point of no return?
Point of no return once you get to there, but you are well through the pay stations by the time you've made that. So if, so if a person's coming in and they already paid, they're going to get their car washed. If they didn't, if they didn't and they decided, oh, I got stuck in this lane and I don't want a car wash, they're going to use this bypass lane and they're going to turn around here and they're going to exit.
I'm just thinking of an emergency situation when somebody has to get out of there at some point. They're stuck once they get past that point. There's no other way of getting out?
Not past that point, there would, there would have to be a few vehicles backing out. And I agree with you, we, every chance we get to have a bypass around a car wash tunnel, we do it. This site with how narrow and long it is, it just presents a challenge of fitting that in.
Because we've had other facilities in town that we made sure that if somebody was to go in and, for example, was a coffee, a coffee place where they didn't have a facility, I mean, access road to get out. I'm like, what if somebody has to get out and they're stuck in this traffic?
Yep.
And they can't get out. So I mean, that'd be a concern of mine, there's no way of putting that into the plan somewhere or?
Well, this was our way of putting it into the plan here. I mean, you could queue up, very large, I should have the number, but a large amount of vehicle, high amount of vehicles here, right? So by the time you're here, you should have probably made your decision of what you want to do if you want it. But I totally agree that it will leave a few cars stuck here.
Could cause chaos at the parking at the car wash too, if somebody has to get out of there and starts.
If, potentially if the whole car wash broke down, there would be people there, but I'd like to think that wouldn't happen.
Okay, just a couple of concerns I had, so I'm sure we can address them. We're a little far away from getting it all resolved at this point, you know, so. But with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, right now.
Okay. Mr. Lozoni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, similar concerns about the traffic. Again, I'd like to see those actual trip generation numbers when you have them. I think kind of what makes me think about that is just how long of a queue you have here. Almost makes it look like one of the old Mass Pike toll booth style when everyone would be queuing up. Do you know how many cars can actually move through the car wash in an hour?
Yes, I do. So why we've proposed three pay stations, which are manned pay stations by our tenants, we typically can run somewhere around a hundred and twenty an hour through there on a peak time. We don't generally see average times, we just don't usually typically have that kind of demand. But if we do, we could, we could generate up to a hundred and twenty cars an hour.
Okay. And so those, those actual attendants at the toll booths are not like an automated sort of?
Correct, yeah. The only automation that takes place is the transaction itself, whether it's cash or credit card. We don't put that in the hands of employees, but the employees are there to help our customers through the transaction process, answer any questions and help them get queued up to get into the tunnel to be processed.
And then also kind of along the same lines of if a, you know, vehicle gets stuck in here or finds out that they can't actually fit in, is there like, do you have a height bar or something that'll?
Yeah, we do. So if you, if you kind of look at the, if you look at those lanes, those two inner lanes there, those lanes are a canopy tie-up style structure with a clearance bar.
Okay.
And then our outer one typically has a clearance bar, a smaller one there for reference, but that's what we call our express lane or our membership lane. And our member cars are cars that have obviously been through the tunnel many times. We're able to process them almost like, like an easy pass lane where they're able to kind of scoot through the retail paying traffic a little quicker.
Okay, all right. So anybody that can fit through those kind of booths up there will be good for the car wash?
Yep. And again, just because we have our attendants there, they're there to help the customer through any nuances or accessories that may be on a vehicle that could be a problem.
Great. And then I think my only other questions here, on all of the vacuum spaces, are those all only for vacuuming? Is there any sort of like retail, if you sell windshield wipers or wiper fluid?
No, no retail. We, we offer just vacuum service and we give complimentary towels in some, in some regards at some of our locations for customers to utilize if they choose.
What's the normal traffic flow you see there? Do folks vacuum and then go through the car wash? Do they car wash and vacuum?
It's about fifty-fifty. I would say that, you know, at our Tingsborough location currently, which is a very similar style traffic flow to what you guys see here, we're seeing about eighty percent of the vacuum traffic is wash customers. Only about twenty percent are vacuuming first and then using the wash.
All right, great. Well, yes, that's all my questions.
Mr. Duffy?
I had a couple of quick questions. One of them is I, I, you know, would like to see you bring, you know, maybe at the next hearing, a, an explanation of the drainage. There's a lot of technical information in here that engineering is reviewing, we're not engineers. An explanation because I'm pretty confused about the overflow and, and, you know, going into an adjacent property. So if I could ask for an explanation on that, 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 you know, a third grader could understand. Okay?
Would you like me to give you that right now?
Sure.
It's up to you, I'm the one who did the stormwater design on this, so. Essentially, I'll try to keep this simple, I apologize, engineers have trouble doing that. So there's, right now, all the stormwater drains to the, a low point right here on the site, okay? So you see these lines here? That's actually a concrete structure with an opening on it, on the face of it. So all the drainage.
Is that on your property?
It's on, yes.
Okay.
Exactly, yes. So all the drainage just drains over land, right, on top of the ground. It's not collected in any pipes or anything. Runs down and enters the face of this structure here and goes in this. Just think of this as a big concrete tank, right? And then the stormwater just goes through there and this provides some treatment of it and retains the stormwater a little bit, meaning less runoff to the site. And then it just, there's two pipes and I, you know, I apologize, I should be on the grading and drainage plan as I tell you this. But there is, so there's two pipes that exit this box. So this concrete box structure, drainage goes in there, gets treated and then outlets via these two pipes that just come out of the box. And they go on to the Wamisette property, okay? Where they are eventually discharged to the wetland in the rear, very, back here, like the northeast corner, okay? So that was already in place, right? It's in place today, it was in place for however many years. When Wamisette came in, there was some, I guess, some, the two sites kind of worked in conjunction a little bit on this connection. And this site, these current owners, being the Garden Center owners, they hired their own engineer to design this box structure, right? And, and kind of coordinated with the construction of the Wamisette. So it's really just a function of, with the way the site is, all the drainage goes to this low point and it, that really just is what it is. Like I've looked at, you can't really have all this drainage going to one place and then send it somewhere else. That doesn't work because then you're increasing flows to that other location, right? So you've got a main.
Overflow, explain that a little better for me.
So overflow just means, so what we're doing is we're really improving the drainage situation, you know, in relation to what's there right now. So before all of the, right now, all the runoff just goes over the land and gets into the structure and out. Now what we're doing is we're collecting, we're raising the site up, we're collecting all the stormwater in these catch basins, running them in pipes to, this is an underground infiltration system. So it's these underground chambers. The water goes in there and it just holds it, stores the volume and slowly releases it back into the ground. So all that water that was, that today is just going to that structure and directly out is not, a large amount of that is actually now going to be infiltrated into the ground because we're raising the site up so much that works. So we're taking the situation where we're greatly reducing the runoff, meaning the runoff rate of it, but also just the volume of water itself. So this is an overflow in that any water that's collected on the site is going to be infiltrated into the ground. But if there's a very large storm event, then there will be some water that overflows that system, right? And then goes out Wamisette here, goes out into Wamisette. But that's really all it is. So we're trying to retain, keep all the stormwater now onsite and infiltrate it. But there are going to be times where it's going to utilize that overflow.
Okay, and did I read on some of the engineering that some of the overflow is going to go over the slope in the back portion of the lot to? Show me where that's going again.
Yeah, it's, but it's, it's no pavement. All the paved areas we're collecting and sending to these infiltrations. The only areas that are going to go back here are areas that go there today. So, but we're actually taking, right now, there's a substantial amount of roof area. There's three greenhouses back here, these rectangles. We're taking those and replacing them with meadow grass essentially, right? So it still goes there because it has to, but it's going to be a much more, a much better situation and less runoff going there.
Okay. And as you mentioned, you may need an order of conditions from, from conservation to do that demolition work?
Correct, yeah, the demolition falls in the hundred-foot buffer, so.
So one of my other questions was, you know, oftentimes, you know, there's a little bit of a chase that goes on to, once the, you know, the new turf comes in and so on and so forth, to have a plan to remove the, you know, the siltation fence and the wattles and so on and so forth. I didn't see any notations to that effect on the.
Yeah, so we have, we provided an erosion control plan. Our notes, and maybe because our notes are on, on sheet two of the set, we put all of our notes on that. And that has all the erosion control notes that you're referring to.
And then, so I had another question. Collab Road there, have, has there been a determination as far as the setback requirements where you, where you have frontage basically on the roads? It's, I think I was zoning six-point-one, point-one-one C. And what's the status of that?
So I wanted to ask this question for clarification on the comment you're referring to. So I will say, I think this is obviously an interpretation thing. The way that, we are showing Collab Road as not frontage, as it's not a right-of-way. It's a private driveway is really what it is. So the way we interpreted it was as it's not, it's not a front, it's not frontage. So the front setbacks don't apply, the side setbacks apply. Again, just our interpretation. That's the reason, and it's because when I read the definition, the way I interpreted is that if we're not providing the physical vehicular access to the lot, that road is not considered frontage. And I may be incorrect in my interpretation. But I, we need to clarify that because that obviously has impact on where we place the.
My understanding is that because it is a private right-of-way.
My understanding is that because it is a private right-of-way, it's not considered a driveway, so it would be subject to that setback. But the remedy there is, this design can still exist, you just need a waiver to reduce the setback. I'm happy to confirm with the building commissioner tomorrow, but I have a feeling that he may feel the same.
Okay, thank you. And would that be, is there a waiver required for both the building setback and the landscape strip to 20-foot if we don't move that?
So it, I believe it already meets the building setback for that. I think it's only 25 feet, so you should, or 50 feet, excuse me. So you should be okay there, but I know that the pavement definitely encroaches.
Okay. Because right now, we're, we're just, I'm sorry, we're just over 15 feet off the-
I'll have to speak with the building commissioner tomorrow then, because if it is a building setback issue, then you'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals because this board does not have the authority to waive structural setbacks.
Okay. So structural setbacks zoning, but if it's just a 20-foot pavement strip?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll double check that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I just had a couple more quick questions. So the hours of operation typically?
7:30 to 7:00 Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00 on Sunday.
Okay. And then the, when you're closed, I noticed the light plan, I, again, I'm not, not that technically savvy to be able to make heads or tails out of that, or to consult with an electric, electrical expert over here. Because, you know, there's always concern about light trespass, you know, you know, the light, especially with LEDs today, you know? You think that they're not that bright, but they are. I mean, you can see an LED light five houses away in my neighborhood, you know, and blinding you. So I just want to make sure that, that there is a good lighting plan that isn't going to be a negative impact on any of the neighbors down there. And, and the hours of operation seem reasonable to me. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. So based on your rendition, the, the front section, the glassed in, you know, where the top, the tallest portion of the, the structure is in the front, the one on the right, so that's the front, right?
Okay.
Yes. So what, what's inside the glass structure? Is that just where you-
Generally, it's an office. It's not, it's set up so that if a customer had an issue, they could, they could walk into that space, but it's not, it's more really for an employee, it's really our employee area.
Okay. And as far as the vacuum setups, the best I can tell from the, you're looking to put them in 15 of the 19 spaces, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So then my concern comes back to your entrance. I would rather see, I would rather see on the island on the right side that separates the car wash lanes from the dryer vacuum lanes. I would rather see maybe a piece of it, maybe about, close to the size of the, the bush that you have in the front there, taken out to give people that much more room when they're coming in to go over to the right. And I'd rather see the first two spaces on this side removed and more of that island there angled off to give, with one, it would line up the out a little bit better with the out, for one. But anybody in those first two spaces who comes backing out, when they back out, they're going to more than likely block somebody coming in. And if that person has to stop right there because they can't get into where you've got the vacuums going, because someone's backing out of those first two spaces, that's going to run the risk of backing people right back, right out onto Main Street pretty quickly. Whereas if you kick it into spaces, then you're less likely to have that potential block, blockage right there. Same thing by pulling back the island on the right. It's going to give those cars a little bit more room to get to the several lanes you have over there rather than, excuse me, that sort of tighter right turn when you first come in. It's just, the idea is that any, any stoppage of cars coming in, in that section is going to run the risk of pushing cars out on a Main Street. So you want to get them into, you know, where they want to go, but you want to give them a little bit more room, I think. And you'd also give people just a little bit more room to make that determination that they're going straight to use the vacuums and not the, you know, not the car wash. But that island comes up real quick when you come in. And you, you know, you almost need to have already known that's how the setup is because you're not going to have time to look for those directional signs like, all right, vacuums, you know what I mean? Like you can't be doing that right there because you're not going to have room for anybody else to get in. So, I mean, you're, you're only required, what did it say, three spaces for the, for the, for the site.
Correct.
So losing the spaces other than cutting down a few, you know, possibly, you know, a couple, one, two with vacuums, you know, if you're keeping the same number of open spaces that don't have vacuums in them, I think it's just, it's going to make the flows, you know, safer on the site for cars coming in. Because, you know, the queue up lane's great, you know, there's, there's tons of space there you shouldn't really have, even on a busy day, the likelihood that the cars are going to back up because you've got plenty of places for them to go. But the stoppage in the front is what's going to kill you and, you know, it's going to kill Main Street, which, you know, right at that spot is not a good place for that to happen because that's a pretty clogged up spot as it is. Actually, remember, is that where they are? Is it after where they are where it becomes two lanes?
Yeah.
It's after, right? Okay. So I mean, I have a little less concern about the left turn out. If you were, if you were closer to where the two lanes start, I'd have a concern of people coming out and going over two lanes to get going south. But if you're prior to the double, double lane, then I guess I'm not as worried about that. But other than that, you know, I think everybody else has hit on most of the others and obviously we, you know, we have information, we're waiting to get back on some other things. I'd agree, but because where you are, we kind of need to know what the traffic is because, you know, one of our requirements anyways is to determine that, you know, there is sufficient infrastructure to deal with potential traffic. And the only way we're really going to be able to tell on something like this is if somebody's running the numbers and telling us, you know, this is what you're likely to get out of this, in this area, this time of day, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it's the only way we're going to maybe be able to make that determination on, you know, because this is drastically different than what was there in terms of, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not even sure. I mean, I know people could park in that front section, you know, for the greenery, but I mean, that wasn't really, that wasn't the real in and out there, you know what I mean? A lot of the cars are going down and dealing with what they had to deal with down around back and coming up that accessway, street, driveway, whatever, whatever it is, that's really where they're coming from. It wasn't, you know, that front section was not the high-traffic area. Now you're shrinking it down, that is now the traffic area. So that's dumping out onto Main Street just to the side of one of the two Wamisett driveways. Plus you've got the, across the street just offset, you've got a, a street across from you, coming, you know, coming there too. And then you're coming up to that set of lights where we have, I don't know, 19 roads for some reason coming into one place at one set of lights. So I think it's really necessary to like, give us a really, you know, more, a more solid answer as to where, you know, where the traffic's going to put us, you know, coming out of there on, you know, I mean, I'm thinking for you guys, more than anything, I'd like to see a little, you know, some concentration on Saturday. I know that's not normal in terms of probably when they're running the, the traffic study, but for your business, my guess is a lot of people are coming on Saturday, they're not coming on Tuesday.
Yeah, we have, we have all that data, so that'll be actually not a big ask.
Okay, yeah. But, you know, mixed into that with the traffic study, I think that's going to be important because that's going to be, you know, Saturday's busy right there for us, likely busy for you, and how those two things meet is, is going to matter, less so maybe on a Tuesday, you know? But other than that, I'm all set right now, Mr. Fatai.
Sure. I have a couple of other questions I forgot. Actually, have any, a butter's been in touch with you guys at all or have been aware of this process at all?
No, I have not heard from any of the-
I think we've notified them of the meeting.
Yeah, they've been notified, but I haven't reached out to them.
So another question I had is exiting the site, it's a problem most days and most nights, you know? I, I frequent Wamisett lanes and getting out of there is pretty difficult. So my concern is if somebody's coming out of the tunnel, how many cars can, can queue in coming out of the tunnel?
Three can fit before they reach that stop bar there at the end, the site intersection.
Okay.
That was the idea. We were trying to keep that exit lane and it kind of ties it into what we were just discussing, kind of shifting things around. We, we try to keep that as long as we can for that reason.
So one of my concerns would be somebody coming in, being in the tunnel in traffic, backing up, getting out onto Main Street. It's a pretty busy, I don't know if you've been there at all on a Saturday or been that, been there on, during the weekend nights and weekends, it's a, it's a pretty busy area. Is what happens if somebody can't get out onto Main Street because of traffic?
So our system has an automation to it. It's a highly technology, high technology where it senses the fact that a car is not moving, it's not, and it shuts our tunnel system down and lets our attendants know that it is due to a traffic situation.
Okay.
So we immediately know what the problem is, we know how to address that problem onsite with our attendants.
Okay.
So it's all automated.
Okay. Any chance of backing the tunnel up to some degree, maybe to allow more cars to be queued in that front section that could get out? Because, I mean, I've been here before in the traffic and you may wait five minutes to get out sometimes, but-
It's possible. I, I try to avoid adding unnecessary amounts of extra pavement when necessary, but that's kind of what we do.
Well, just a concern, and I think as we go along, I think that may be a concern of some of my other colleagues as well here. And my last question, I'll let, let it go, is how loud are the, are the vacuums? You have 15 vacuums planned in that location and I guess the noise question would be a concern.
That's a really great question. We have decimal studies that we'd be happy to provide at the next hearing so that you guys have that data. But we use a central vacuum system, which is a, it's a central turbine system, and it is placed outdoors, but we put a giant muffler system on it. So you could talk on a cell phone next to a 60 horsepower turbine, which is what we expect to use here, and you can talk just like you and I are today.
Really?
Yeah. It's fantastic. It's really interesting.
All right. So my other question, my last one, is when you go into the vacuum section, right? If you want to get a car wash, you have to come back out and get in line, correct?
That would be correct.
Yeah.
What happens if there's a line there? Do you have to just wait?
If there's a line waiting for the car, well, that, that's kind of the reason why we're, part of the reason why we provide such a long queue.
Why you don't see that, right there?
This is probably not going to be occupied.
Yeah, I would say this is one of our longest queue lanes we've ever had.
Yeah, okay. All right. Good on us, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
The only comment I made off of Mr. Fatai's, but if he's talking about pushing the building back, you're not going to add pavement. You're going to lose it in the back to gain it in the front.
Oh, while you're saying-
Were you thinking something different?
Depends how we do it. I was thinking chipping the whole thing back so we keep everything laid out the way it is. So you would make the, I was picturing making the driveway throat a little bit longer.
We could.
So you would be adding that. We, we could, yeah, we could definitely look at it. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself.
It's just, it feels, I mean, you've got so much, you know, for the people coming in, which is fine, because if you have to slow down your, your, your car wash, there's plenty of room for them to all back up there. But really, if you, if that's only three cars worth, I have a feeling that you're going to find that your, your car wash is going to be stopped a lot. Because, you know, you've got three there and then, I don't know, that's one more car waiting to get out. So you're talking about four cars is all you've really got room for waiting to get out on Main Street. And I can guarantee you, if any of those four cars wants to take a left, it is not going to be a quick process. You know, if they want to take a right, yeah, they're probably getting out. But if anybody wants to go south, there's a good chance your car wash is going to stop.
Okay, so I'm with you. So you're kind of shortening the entrance lane and lengthening the exit lane.
You have a lot of room over here. So if you push this back, one, it also solves one of Mr. Fatai's comments from earlier, which is between your drop dead lane of, you know, if you're going to leave, leave now, and that last bit of queue that you're waiting to get into the car wash, if that's actually shorter, because you've had plenty of time, I think, at that point, you know, you don't have to queue up a ton of cars. But if you're queuing them up, you're queuing them up in the back. Give the front section more room for more, more cars to queue up because they're going to. And then your system's less likely to be slowed down as often, you know, because it's not going to take long for four cars to stop at the front there. I, I pretty much guarantee it. So I think you're better off with that shift because you have so much extra over here. If there's a queue, the queue can sit, be over here in these three lanes rather than having it sitting in that, that last little curve, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I follow you 100%.
Because like you said, you know, 120 cars in an hour? No. That's never happening. You know what I mean? You're never getting 120 cars through there, even if everybody in Tucksbury wants to come to your car wash. I guarantee you are not getting 120 cars through there in an hour because your system is going to shut itself down because you aren't getting 120 cars out the other end fast enough to run 120 cars through it. So the technology can be as impressive as possible, but it's never going to move those cars on you. So the more room you give them up front, the better off you're going to be. So, all right, with that-
Mr. Chairman, just one thought. With, if they're going to do some reconfiguration, would it make sense on the egress to add a right turn only lane?
I don't think so, because if they're not at the two lane, if they're not where the two lanes are, that's why I asked before.
Yeah.
Because the other thing too is then you're just going to feed all that traffic up to the light and you're going to force them to either go down to Piñatas and cross two lanes into that insane backup that comes from Astor back towards Walmart.
Right.
Which makes no sense if they want to go south, or you're going to send them up the street, you know what I mean? Like you're almost, I just think you're causing more trouble than you're going to, than you're going to want. You know, I mean, Wamisett has two exits, they both can go out and go left.
Right.
You know, I don't know why have this be different at that point unless it was at the two lanes. If it was at the two lanes, I'd have said yes, because crossing two lanes of traffic and then getting into the third lane, which is the one you really want, now I understand it because someone's going to zip right around the car that stopped to let you out because they're kind and the other person's not. They just T-bones you right in the middle, now we have a problem.
Yeah, it's a good point.
But without-
I would, I don't know if you've, how much time you've spent at the site, but like, go down there on a Saturday when you've got all the Home Depot, Walmart, and Wamisett traffic all plowing through there at very high capacity, and you'll have a sense of what all of these concerns are. I assure you, they are very valid. When my daughter, she was a teenager, she worked at Wamisett when it first opened, I forbade her from trying to go left. I was like, take the right, go up on Pike and just come around the back roads, like just don't even try. It's just, you know, for a young driver, it would be that hazardous, but, so definitely put a lot of effort into looking at your traffic situation, especially where you can discharge cars at two per minute. That's, I mean, that's way faster than, you know, I mean, just one, one backup at the light, you're going to be blocked for a minute and a half fairly regularly on a busy day.
All right. So again, back to why we need the traffic study, because it's going to matter, because even the cars coming to take the left to come into your, your, your place from north, we're going to need to know what that's, you know, what that's going to do to the traffic there, so. All right. With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Don Bornstein. I'm an attorney. My office is located at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover. The office is Johnson &amp; Bornstein. I represent Wamisett Lanes, Inc., the butter to this project. I have a brief submission for the board. I did submit it by email to Ms. Louder, but it was late in the day and she probably hasn't seen it. So if you give me one minute, I'm going to pass out paper copies of that real quickly.
One meeting without paper. So close.
Thank you.
So I think as the board has recognized, this proposal represents a very significant change in activity and traffic at this location. What you have in front of you is my letter highlighting a couple of early concerns. You also have two other letters enclosed with that. Wamisett Lanes has also retained civil design consultants. Mr. Hanley has his letter attached to mine with some initial comments on the plan. And also Richard Kuko, a surveyor, has identified certain items in his memo to the board as well, also attached to my letter. I'm just going to highlight a few that really haven't been touched on at more length tonight. So you did discuss the setback briefly. And my reading of the bylaw is very clearly that the full front setback, the 25 feet, does apply to Collab Road. Corner lots, and I point out the section in my letter, have to meet the frontage, excuse me, the front setback on both streets that make up the corner, whether they take their frontage off it or not. So I think that by itself creates a fairly significant redesign of this site if they're going to have to move that building back 10 feet. That's one of the legal issues I address in my letter. The second does hit on the drainage issue. I'm not a drainage designer or engineer, but I do have some concerns about the fact that basically all the drainage that comes off this site, except for the little grassy area in the back, all that drainage comes off and goes through the Wamisett Lane site. And it doesn't just get hard piped from there through their site out to wetlands on the far side. It actually empties into their drainage and treatment system that they designed for their approval and for their development. So it's not a small concern for Wamisett Lanes that we're taking, you know, a site today, which does have a fair amount of pavement, but it's decades old, highly porous likely. We're going to put tight pavement over a majority of that site, including cars that are dripping with soap and other things that come out of a car wash. And we're going to take that, all the things that run off of that site, and we're going to put it into the Wamisett Lane drainage facility. They have a very expensive, you know, somewhat complex drainage facility underneath their site. All this goes there. That easement requires them to maintain that at their expense. And with this significant new development, I think the idea that they should handle their own drainage on their own site is probably a good one. I also raised that they might be legally obligated to do that. Now, I haven't done a full title review of the easement rights at issue here, but they're certainly crucial to this design. This design doesn't work without discharging all that water into the Wamisett Lanes facility. And I've noted that my initial quick read of the easement documents that are on record does indicate that if that site is changed, that, and I quote the language here, "Any future increase due to additional impervious area or regressing is not included." That's language straight out of the easement. So I do have some concern on that. I haven't reached a final conclusion on it. But they may have an easement rights issue with what is a major design concern for this site. I'll hit just a couple of the highlights from the other attached letters. Neither Mr. Hanley nor Mr. Kuko could be with us tonight. They both had conflicts tonight. But they are very interested and have some concerns about the site. Mr. Hanley's letter focuses mostly on drainage. And again, it's, we should be clear, all that drainage, the only way it gets off that site besides some that may percolate into the ground, all that drainage otherwise goes into the Wamisett Lanes stormwater treatment facility. Additionally, traffic, of course, discussed at length already. I won't discuss it at length now. But these facilities are designed for maximum efficiency and huge volumes of cars. That's what they're designed to do. That's why they make so much money. That's why you see them proposed in towns all over the area. I'm representing the butter to one in Methuen right now, similar design. If I'm reading the traffic report correctly, this is increasing the traffic by 1,300 trips a day. Not a small amount. You can see it just from the design. They've got three toll booths leading in here. They've got an easy pass lane. All those lanes congregate, and Chairman pointed out at length, I think, just now. They all come together in one tight spot right at the beginning of the site. Those cars come out of that tunnel every 30 seconds or so. Real, traffic is a real concern here, something that should be peer reviewed at a minimum. And the, there are some real concerns around that. This quarter already has some challenges with traffic. And when you put a very profitable business whose entire business model is derived from high vehicle turnover, and you've heard it from the applicants themselves tonight, this business floats on cars coming in and out very quickly all day long, that the traffic impacts of that are going to have to be heavily considered. And also considered whether this is a good location for a business that relies on that. This business makes money off of generating traffic and generating turning movements in and out of that site all day long. And is this a good spot for that? That's something for the board to consider, something that the butter's team has just started to get into. But, and the board spoke about it, I think, at some length already, something that definitely needs to be high on the radar screen. Mr. Kuko's letter points out a few additional items. I mean, noise, there wasn't mentioned a vacuum. And I'm glad someone pointed out the fact, wanted to know a little bit more information about the noise generation from the vacuums. That's important. Also, a high noise generator from these types of facilities is the car dryer at the end of the tunnel. Sometimes those can be much louder than the vacuums themselves. We'd want some specs on the noise. And I believe, I believe the town has a noise ordinance. You know, we've taken a little bit of a look at some other facilities that run under the same brand. Those facilities are not quiet facilities. You know, my client runs, you know, events there, wants to have a, you know, a family-friendly space. Having a loud droning noise that runs 12 to 13 hours a day is a detriment to that and a concern. We pointed out some other things here. Obviously, the parking configuration, we have some concerns. The way a trash truck could get in and out of there, you're going to have to somehow back up and maneuver that trash truck that's going to the very back of the site somehow to get that in and out of there. We did hear hours tonight. We didn't see that in the application, so now we do know the hours. And we're a little bit concerned and would want some more information on their visibility sign at the front of the site, what that's going to conflict with and maybe shade or shadow the existing signs that are out there. Primarily, the Wamisett Lane sign is our concern. We'd want to know a little bit more about height, dimensions, placement, and whether that puts it in the sightline of the existing signs and clutters up that view. So that's a real short run-through summary of the issues. We very much expect to come back, present to the board with Mr. Hanley and Mr. Kuko in tow so they can, they can go into their concerns a little bit deeper. I know we've got some peer review and town review comments that I saw today. It sounds like the development team saw it today too, so there's some stuff to dig in to there. Some of them mirror what Jim and Dick's comments are in this package. So I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you for the time, and we will see you again on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question, Mr. Bornstein, while you're at the microphone. It's awful hard to read this stuff. We're sitting at the desk now. If we could have got it sooner, it would have been greater, but we'll review it for next meeting. Thank you.
Yes. No, I appreciate that. And it would, I hate to drop things on the board the night of. I know you can't read it, which is why I'm summarizing it. I fully expected this process to go at least another session, if not more. And it was really because the butter, you know, we only get so much notice of it. No one contacted the butter in advance. No plans were provided to the butter as a heads up or a sort of a neighborly thing to do. They got regular legal notice, and then they've got to scramble and hire folks and get together. Comments on a, on a pretty significant, potentially impactful neighbor. And so we were doing our best. I appreciate the comment, though.
Thank you very much.
And I expect you to get through it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Obviously, still a lot of stuff outstanding, so we'll continue this to our next meeting. We have 8 o'clock. Is that right?
Oh, my God.
Call it 7:55 because it sounds better. We're going to go with 7:55. Do we have a motion to continue this till 7:55?
So moved.
The date?
That is 12/18. And just for your FYI, because I mentioned it earlier, I will not be able to attend the 18th meeting. So do with that as you will. That's completely up to you guys, but just so you have the heads up.
What is the next meeting calendared after the 18th? So we know.
January 8th.
8th.
January 8th.
And as Mr. Chairman alluded to, the only issue with having a four-person board at that meeting is if you reach a point where you are looking for a decision, you would need a unanimous vote of the members present because a special permit is a supermajority where the site plan and the land disturbance are a minor, a simple majority, excuse me. So likewise, if any of the other members are unable to attend, you would be ineligible like other applicants who are seeking special apartments to receive a decision at that meeting. So.
We'll let you know in advance as to whether or not we're going to bump to the 8th
Sure.
in light of that reduction in the voting block. What kind of lead time does the board want in terms of updated plans, response letters from us? Because we're going to, we're going to provide you with a.
Anything that's specifically for the board.
Yes.
The sooner you get it in, the better, because then it goes in our package that we're picking up, you know, on a Friday before the meeting on a Monday. So if you want us to look at something and actually be able to make some sort of decision on it, it's got to be in that package. But as far as updated plans and those kind of things, because they're going to be reviewed, you know, by someone else, and then we're going to get the results and the comments to that, the sooner the better on that.
Understood.
As far in advance as possible.
I only ask different boards have different, you know, mandates on when we provide.
I've checked with Ms. Louder on anything like specific, but again, you know, volume is the issue, you know, with a lot of these. You know, they're going to get in changes from all the hearings. So you want to get yours in as quickly as possible. The more likely it is to get reviewed and the comments issued in enough warning for us to review them or you to review and comment them then further. You know, the quicker those things get done, the less likely you're going to get kicked to another hearing.
Understood.
For no good reason other than just time.
All right. We're going to get your plan edits. We're going to get your response letter on the beta comments. And then certainly I'll respond to Council's letter as well on the points that have been raised. So.
All right.
10 to 14 days is generally appreciated. Of course, I'm not.
I know, I know we're facing the holiday season too, so.
Yeah, it's worth more than my job to tell you can't submit anything, but for an adequate amount of time for myself and the engineers to review, 10 to 14 days is generally the rule of thumb for us.
If we choose to bump to the 8th, can we do that administratively by signing an extension form with you? We don't need to physically appear on the 18th to deal with that issue?
No, we typically, our rule of thumb is we'll typically let, you know, a petitioner continue a few times. But when it starts to get excessive, we make them come back in and tell us what's going on.
Of course.
So we won't do it forever, but, you know, there's leeway for a while.
All right. I would say that I'm leading towards, with the amount of updates that we need to engage in, providing you some lead time, having the holidays before us, and knowing that we have a voting member that's going to be absent the 18th, I'm leaning towards recommending that we bump to the 8th. So just know that that is likely forthcoming.
Okay, good enough. All right. So we'll keep it for now, and then you guys.
Yes.
That way, just in case everything changes and, you know. All right. So good enough. So we've got that continued to our next meeting. So.
That motion was not official. I only have a motion on the floor from Mr. Fataia.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we, all right. So a motion made. Do we have a second? Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next several, we're getting continued. So we have Agenda Item E, 913 East Street. Petitioners requested to be continued to our next meeting. We have them penciled in for 7:45. Do we have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item F is also asked to be continued. That's 1438 Main Street to 7:40 at our next meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item G, 1600 Shawshank Street A. Do we have a continue to 7:25 at our next meeting? Do we have a motion? A motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 16, Agenda Item I, no, I'm sorry, Agenda Item H, 1600 Shawshank Street B. Do we have a motion to continue to 7:30 on our next meeting?
So moved.
A motion made. Do we have a second? Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item I, 1879 Street. They also have a request of continuance. Do we have a motion to continue to 7:50?
So moved.
At our next meeting. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And Agenda Item J, 1167, 1177, 1187 Main Street. Do we have a motion to continue to 7:35 at our next meeting?
So moved.
A motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item K, 836, 846 Main Street. This is continued from our last meeting.
Good evening. I'm Michael Columba.
Floor is yours.
Okay. Since the last meeting, my engineers followed up with all the answers. We had additional test screenings made witnessed by the engineering office. I trust that the engineer answered all the questions on the, with the engineers' concerns. And as far as I'm concerned, all the answers, yeah, all the questions were answered that I'm aware of.
I'll just turn off the projector.
Ms. Louder, does that sound accurate to you?
I do not feel comfortable speaking for the engineering division. I will say that I can confirm that Mr. Columba's, what he has said, that they conducted test pits and witnessing in front of the engineering division last Monday, and they submitted revised plans last Tuesday. I drove those plans to the DPW myself on Tuesday afternoon, but seeing as it was right before the Thanksgiving holiday and offices closed at noon on Wednesday, the engineering division has not provided a follow-up review. However, I have asked them to make that their first priority in plan reviews. So I haven't received it yet. I expect it's forthcoming. Based on my layman's reading of Mr. Columba's engineer's response, it appears that the comments have been addressed. But again, I am not an engineer, and I will not speak for the engineering division on whether those comments comply.
But at this point, unlike last time, the effort has been there to address the comments. We just haven't gotten confirmation. Okay. So if that's the case, then the discussion from last time might be something we can work with this time. So. All right. And then we've got the, the payment and loo number for a sidewalk, correct? You saw this as well?
Yeah, but for that price, I would just do my.
Do the sidewalk?
Sorry.
But honestly, that, I mean, that just seems to be the way it's going to work. It's a lot cheaper to do it when you're already out there.
I've done miles of sidewalk. Not a problem.
Works for us, so more sidewalks, the better.
The only thing, if I could, would there be a consideration doing it in the spring or do I have to do it now? I mean, I could. It's, it's.
That's a, that's an engineer. I don't know what about doing it in the spring versus.
So if that is the case, so what we have typically seen is to guarantee the construction of the sidewalk. Typically, the engineering division will request that a bond in the amount for the construction of the sidewalk is put in place until the sidewalk is constructed, at which point it can be relinquished.
There's a personal landscape. I mean, we're not going to be able to do landscape at this time of the year.
Makes sense.
I'll be lucky if I can get a binder coat, you know, for the winter, you know, just get through the winter. And then first thing, spring comes, you know, we would landscape it, finish the.
There's a process for, you know, to account for winter, wintertime.
Exactly. Yeah. And I'm not trying, you know, I mean, it's to my best interest. It gets done. I mean, it's not a big deal.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll start. Mr. Duffy.
I really have no questions on this, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Lazzaro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the effort to kind of work through some of these with engineering. I think, you know, without seeing any comments from our engineer, I don't have any additional questions. I think that's all for me.
Mr. Chamberlain?
Same. Good progress. Feels like we're getting really close. We just need that final confirmation. So other than that, no new comments.
Mr. Fataia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would hope we had a point tonight that we could resolve this thing and approve it all for you, but.
I appreciate it.
Unfortunately, with the holiday here and so forth and so on, I think we're going to be being pushed back to the next meeting, you know? And, but I think by then, all your ducks will be in order, all your Ts crossed, your Is dotted, and we should be able to move forward. I don't have a problem with the delaying of the sidewalk in the back until the spring. I don't think that's an issue. I think we'd all be willing to go along with that. I should speak just for myself, actually. But with that, I mean, it's a, it's a long process. You guys have done a lot of work to get there. I'd love to see you guys approved, but it won't be until next meeting, if that's okay. So.
It has to be. I mean, the inside of the building, I'm like 99th. I mean, I'm literally done, you know? And so I'm at your mercy at this point, you know? And again, that is what it is. I understand.
All right.
All set.
All right. So, yeah, again, I'm not the most likely person to do this, but at this point, I'm not opposed to doing this contingent on the engineering department signing off on what's been submitted. I don't see where they're arguing about anything anymore. If you're comfortable with that, that's, you know, that's up to you. You can leave it open, in which case, if there's some issue, you can come back. But if your preference is to, you know, see if the board's willing to do contingent upon, you know, the plans being, you know, acceptable, then that's up to you. I only make that comment because, one, with me missing the next meeting, and, two, because we only have one meeting next month. So, you know, with, you know, I'm not sure what's left outstanding beyond, you know, them signing off that they've gotten what they want. And if they don't, you're going to have to resubmit whatever it is they're telling you you didn't send. But I'm not sure there's much left for us, you know?
I agree, Mr. Chairman, and I'd be willing to do that too. I just didn't hear that from my other colleagues, but if that's the consensus on the board.
Again, I'll say, it's up to the petitioner if that's what you're at it, what I asked for. I know you were asking for it last time, but we weren't comfortable then. I would feel more comfortable this time, you know? But that's up to you because just as a reminder, once we're done, we're done. You know, there are no more talk, there's no more talking to us. It's between you and, you know, the engineering department.
I mean, I think we came to sort of, I mean, I don't think there was much discord between my engineer and the engineer, and the engineering officer. I mean, I think we addressed just about everything. I mean, I think we addressed just about everything. My hope was that I could get doing, I mean, I'm sorry, that I could get started, like, on things that are not of a challenge or an argument, you know, like the sidewalk in front of the building, you know, things of that nature that could be done.
The permit's not active until it's done. And we don't get contingent, that means it's not done.
Right.
So it's up to you, like I said, you know.
What are my options? I mean, what...
Your options are, you can request that we make the, you know, make a determination this evening, but it would be contingent upon getting the final sign-offs from engineering, that, you know, they've received the changes, updates, whatnot, to the plans and all that that they're, they've been asking for, and that that's been complied with, and the permit won't be finalized until that's done. You can leave it open, waiting for them to confirm that, come back at the next meeting, and you can have a vote then. The only difference is, as I've already said, I won't be here at the next meeting. You need three out of the four that hopefully will still be here at the next meeting, barring anybody else missing. So, you know, provided no one else has a conflict and no unexpected problem comes up, you'll have four members, and you need three of them.
And if you have a determination tonight, would that benefit me, but in the next meeting, if you're not here?
Well, if we make a determination tonight, there is no next meeting. We're done. It's just between you and the engineering department to make sure they've gotten what they need from you. Once that's done, then the appeal period will run, and at which point, when the appeal period is over, then, you know, you're done. So put it this, just for an example, and this isn't how it's going to be.
Sure, please.
Just as an example, should the board make a decision in favor of your, your, your proposal tonight, and tomorrow, the engineering department says, "We're good," then the appeal period can stop. If you wait till the 18th of December, if the engineer department says tomorrow they're all set, it doesn't matter, because you haven't gotten a decision yet. You're going to wait till, um, December 18th to find out what your decision is, at which point, then the 20 days is going to run. That's your difference, and like I said, I won't close this until I've polled the rest of the board to make sure they're even okay with that, but it's up to you to even want it. If you don't want it, we can continue it to the next meeting and wait and see what engineering has to say. It's completely up to you.
You guys know the path better than I do, so I would, you know, I would ask you guys, give me the path of least resistance.
At this point, it's not for us to decide. You know, last time, you were asking for us to make a contingency decision.
Right.
If you still want to make that request, that's up to you. If you do not, then we will continue the hearing to the next meeting, at which point, hopefully, everything's swept away with the engineering department, at which case, you can get a clean decision that does not contingent on anything.
Okay, so if you have a determination tonight, and the engineer agrees that everything is compliant, how do we get the permit? What happens?
So from there, I draft the decision, which gets filed with the town clerk's office after the chairman signs it. So as soon as the engineering division is okay with it, I would put it out for Mr. Chairman's signature with the accompanied approved plan, and then I follow up with you throughout the process as it gets filed with the town clerk, and then I let you know what the appeal period date is. And as the chairman noted, if you continue through to December 18th, any time between now and then, it doesn't matter how soon or how late it gets, final approval from DPW, because you'll still be waiting to go to that December 18th meeting. You know, if, in an ideal world, if everything is reviewed and okay between now and then, you already have the board's vote, and then I can move forward with drafting the permit.
Well, what do we do then? If you don't mind, I mean, it's, it's one step out of the way, and like I said, I, I mean, I am committed to working with engineering. I, I'm not challenging them, you know. Just tell me what you want to do, and I'll do it, you know.
You don't have a say once we close this, because we, we're not an intermediary any longer. We're going to be off, off the decision, decision process. So it's going to be between you and the engineering department, and you're going to have to do everything they want, unless there's a gray area where we can intervene, but.
Once we close the hearing and make a ruling, then there is no more decision-making by us. So like I said, it's up to you. It's, you know, could be, you may view it as six half-dozen of another. So, you know, if you leave it open, then, you know, the board still has the ability to potentially weigh in on something should it come up.
Can you override the engineering office?
Only through the public hea...
Override is not the right word.
Yeah, only through the public hearing process, if there were to be an allowance or relief requested, and it was within the board's authority to do so. For example, the board, this board in particular, does not have the ability to waive or provide relief from DEP requirements. So when it comes to stormwater management, a lot of the rules that you would have to follow, they wouldn't be able to provide relief for anyway. But as the chairman has noted, if a change occurs in the plans, that then affects something within their purview, if the hearing's closed, they don't have the ability to provide comment or relief or any, or weighing in on it any further. Where you've gotten, if you'll allow me, since you've gotten to the point where it's mostly stormwater calculation and grading related, I wouldn't think that it is anything that the board would necessarily weigh in on. But again, I'm not, it's far be from me to have you give up your rights to your public hearing.
I mean, I think we addressed every, every concern that they had. You know, we, we did not challenge them in any way. We just, from the beginning, I said, "Tell me where the goalpost is, and I'll throw the ball at it." You know, I mean, we, I haven't challenged, I just needed to know what to do and move forward, you know. So the worst scenario is I lose two more weeks then, if, right?
The next meeting is December 18th, so a little, little over two and a half, yeah.
Because then it goes into January.
Correct.
And I heard, what, the 8th?
Yeah, so then the site plan approval on that schedule would likely give you full ability to apply for DPW permits and what have you after the 1st of the year.
I just lost all my, I mean, I'm literally going to have to lay off, because I hired a bunch of these people, and I'm training them in my other facilities, but I'm going to keep 10 people on payroll for another month, just to see what happens. I mean, I feel bad for them even more so than, than for myself, you know. It's, uh, it's not a good situation, you know? Because I, I mean, like I said, inside, I'm like 90, I mean, I, I could be done in a week, you know, and I'm slowing things down, you know, and I'm starting the other project in Bela Rica soon, and I'm going to be busy with that one, you know, and that's a much bigger development. I was just hoping to get this thing done, wrapped up, and jump to the other one, and these guys keep the jobs.
Still need us with the same question.
I know, I...
My opinion, let's move it on. I mean, if you're working with the engineering department now and it's going smooth, then just keep working with them, do what they have to have you to do. And if we want, we can take a, take a, take a vote here tonight, if everyone's willing to do that, with the conditions that we've, I mean, you have the majority of your issues resolved.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean.
I have them listed from other reviews. Uh, sorry, the chairman's questioning any applicable waivers or conditions. Those were captured in prior review memos that I had detailed, so it can just be as discussed if you want to keep it simple.
Who do I negotiate about, let's say, you know, pushing the sidewalk to the spring? Would that be engineering?
So that's something that typically we would use the building occupancy, so noting it as a temporary occupancy until six months where it is more feasible to construct the sidewalk, and then submit a bond for that amount to guarantee the construction of the sidewalk. Yep.
We've done it many times, that's not an issue. Okay.
It's up to you.
Vote, you know.
Give me one second, just make sure that everybody's okay with that, but that's your request, so, Mr. Chamber, are you fine?